Let's get started. Welcome, everyone, to this town hall. My name is Uday Kapoor. I am on the board of NAMI Santa Clara County, and my focus is on supportive housing. It gives me great pleasure to welcome Senator Jim Bell to this town hall. Senator Bell was born in San Jose to a loving family of modest means and learned the true values of hard work and the importance of giving back to the community to improve people's lives. Senator Bell graduated from Bellarmine College Preparatory and received a degree in political science from San Jose State University. And at the age of 28, he became the youngest person ever to be elected to the San Jose City Council. During his 30 years in public office at the city, county, and state levels, he has been a champion and advocate for underserved youth, low-income people, and people facing mental health challenges. Through the achievement of numerous landmark bills, that is his signature achievement as a legislator, he has left his mark across the state. And there has been a tremendous response to the town hall. We have, you know, Supervisor Cindy Chavez and David Manetta and Supervisor Derek Cortese, who will log in at 4:00, among other people. So with that, I would like to say one word that actually, the way it got started was, I met Senator Bell at the Coffee House in Alameda for a community meeting, and so did Lisa Bowman from our warm line. And we were starting to ask him questions, and he said, invite me, we'll come and do that. So we can talk about that. And that's what happened. But then, of course, COVID hit, so we couldn't have a face-to-face meeting. So here we are with this town hall. So with that, I will pass on to Ravina, who she's the new executive director, Ravina Nimbalker, as Kathy Forward has retired. And so she will take it from here and, you know, go through with the whole process. Thank you, Ravina.
You're there, and welcome, Senator Bell. Hello, everyone, and thank you for joining us this afternoon. My name is Ravina Nimbalker, and I'm the new executive director at NAMI Santa Clara County. I'm very excited and honored to be part of such an amazing organization. And I've always been an advocate for mental health issues, and I'm excited to take this organization to the next level and help them, help with the mission moving forward. NAMI Santa Clara County helps people with lived experience of mental health issues and families by providing support, education, and advocacy. We recognize that people affected with mental health issues face additional challenges during this crisis. And now, more than ever, it's very important to remember that there's no health without mental health. Having said that, I would like to invite Senator Jim Bell to give us updates on the legislative issues concerning mental health, housing, treatment, and parity. Over to you, Senator.
Hi, everybody. You want me to start?
Yes.
Well, good afternoon. It's really an honor to be here virtually, and we're grateful we have some technology that we can work on to allow us to talk to one another and communicate. So mental health is something that touches everybody, as you know. Right now, we're feeling a this really an undercurrent of a pandemic of despair right now because of the COVID-19. And I think it's going to get worse as we approach when school opens. I think that particularly is going to cause a lot of stress on families. So the advocacy organizations, especially NAMI, have to really gear up and get ready to help many, a multitude of people. I'm working on a future of less stigma and discrimination. Some people use the term stigma, you know? We could talk about that a little bit, but it's really what it is, is discrimination. Discrimination against people that have mental illness and the way they're treated by the health system, school systems, the general public even. And I think that's something we have to really fight to change. This isn't a one-person job, so we want to have a role for everybody as an advocate and be all individually more aware and more aware of what we can do and how we can be an advocate. So I'm glad to be here. Legislators on both sides and I'll understand that 75% of Californians with mental health needs neither receive adequate care or they don't get any mental health care at all. So this has been what we have learned, even worse in the situation we're in today. And I believe we have an opportunity now with Governor Newsom and the new administration, including Surgeon General Dr. Nadine Burk Harris, who is talking about adverse childhood experiences and in fact, how the impact on their overall healthcare and academic performance, the adverse health, childhood experiences has on children. So here's a quote from Governor Newsom. He said, in his State of the State address, "Ten million Californians, one in four, suffer from some type of behavioral health condition. It's not a narrow issue, nor is it a new one. The deeper truth is that our healthcare system has been designed to treat some of the parts, but not the sum of the parts, and that must change." So I think Governor Newsom sort of gets it. We'll see when he deals with the budget right and whether or not he approves some of the bills that we have. So providing resources and tools to learn how to build resiliency and cope with the stressors is why we keep fighting and why keep introducing and writing bills. So let's talk about some of those things. A recent poll showed that more than 1/3 of Americans said that COVID-19 is seriously affecting their mental health. And I want to introduce you to the legislation that we have introduced, that we're going to talk about probably in discussion. We have introduced SB 803 to certify peer support specialists for mental health. And that's to have the peer support program, just like 48 states already do. California is only one of two states that doesn't. So we're trying to get that bill passed, SB 803. SB 854, we introduced, and we wanted to see that bill passed, but that bill was not successful. This bill would have removed insurance barriers for people who receive medication-assisted treatment for addiction. So those are two bills I introduced this year. SB 854 was killed in Senate Health Committee. By the way, a lot of bills get killed, surprisingly, in the health committees of both the Assembly and the Senate. Do you know why? Lobbyists depose them from the health insurance plans and other organizations. So we try to achieve mental health legislation, and sometimes it's very difficult to get the bills passed. That's why we have to keep fighting. Now, let's talk about the peer support bill. This bill would allow peer support specialists, who are people who have lived experiences with mental health challenges, and they're especially trained to use that experience to help other people. And studies show that the peer support services are proven to reduce hospitalization, enhance recovery, reduce symptoms, enable people to return to work more quickly. Now, that seems like it's something that's made to order for the situation we're in today with the COVID-19. That's the kind of thing we need right now to help people survive this pandemic of despair that I talked about. We're also doing something that just happened. I'm going to talk about this. Over the last two years, I've worked on a couple important measures to expand services to children and young adults. Now, first, we worked on funding for more mental health services for the schools. And we actually got $50 million in the budget for Mental Health Student Services Act. This will help school districts partner with county governments to create mental health wellness centers in the schools. And it looked good for our county because we have a superintendent that's a strong supporter of this, Dr. DeWine, who's our county superintendent of schools. And she's leading the county office of education. And she and myself and the county had behavioral health services worked together, and we applied for a $6 million grant to create wellness centers in junior high and high school all throughout Santa Clara County. This grant was just approved on Thursday at the Mental Health Services Act Commission meeting. So we just got this grant approved. Hooray for Santa Clara County. And I am a member of the commission. I represent the California State Senate. As many of you know, I'm the chair of the Senate Select Committee on Mental Health and Substance Abuse. So I represent the Senate on that commission. And we're very pleased to award Santa Clara County, who had, it was a competitive grant that beat out other counties. We are very happy to receive that program. So all junior high and high schools will have the wellness centers. This is very important. I wanted to shout out to the county also for creating the youth drop-in centers. And we got $15 million in the budget for the youth drop-in centers. Santa Clara County now has two, one in Mountain View that's been open and one in East San Jose. These are places where young people can go for services outside the schools. And we hope that those young adults can receive their services through the youth drop-in centers. It's kind of like mental health urgent care for kids, where they can go and just have somebody to talk to and get immediate help if they need it and participate in programs that will help themselves. You know, the fact is that 70% of the mental health conditions start to happen in the under-18 period. And so if we have these kinds of programs, we can, over a long-term period of time, reduce the number of people with severe mental illness if we're directly dealing with them when they're younger. So we really, really want to support all of you. And congratulate Santa Clara County for the achievement. The budget this year was rough because of the revenue's decline. We did manage to get a backfill for county governments for mental health. And it was rough. It was a dogfight, if you want to say it that way. Real tough budget fights when there just isn't enough money for everything. And we did have some success in getting restored money for behavioral health services in the counties. Now, I hope in the next few weeks we can restore further behavioral health services. So that's what we hope to achieve and to get this legislation before the governor and signed into law. I'd like to thank everyone that keeps pushing the state to give mental health the attention it deserves. And, you know, I look forward to the day when we have no barriers for mental health. It's treated just like any other illness. This is the last term that I have in December 1st in my time as a state senator. And I hope to work in the community as an activist, if not as a senator, after that period of time for mental health services in California. So thank you very much. I want to support any efforts NAMI does. I'd like to give a shout out to my wife, Pat, who's been very supportive, fundraising, getting membership, other kinds of things, working with NAMI. So this is kind of a family involvement thing for us. And we hope to see many of you soon in person. So thank you very much. And congratulations to Santa Clara County on getting that $6 million grant for our school kids just two days ago. So it's kind of a good thing to say. You know, we had some good news for everybody today. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I look forward to seeing you in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Jim Bell, and thank you for this presentation. When we opened up this town hall, we had registrants ask questions. And so now I'm going to ask you those questions that are public as asked. So to begin with, the first question, has someone prepared a financial case for SB 803?
We, I have a very strong staff that works on SB 803. In fact, my lead person on that is my chief of staff. And we are working with the Assembly Health Committee, which is going to have a hearing on SB 803, August 4th at 2:00. You can, of course, participate. You can actually testify through the internet if you desire. So if you want to say that you're for 803, you can simply get logged on, and they will call you when your turn happens for public testimony. And you can say that you're for 803, and you think 803 is necessary to have the peer support programs. And we want letters to the governor. We've always had problems with the governor. He vetoed the bill last year. We rewrote the bill so that we're avoiding some of the financial issues that he raised at the last time. And we hope to overcome his veto this year. By the way, SB 803 passed the state senate, 38 to nothing. And we want to see the same kind of result in the assembly. Last year, the bill we had last year had no negative votes. And then it went to the governor, and he vetoed it because of the Department of Finance. And I always have a hard time with them, convincing them that mental health programs are good. And it's kind of because they don't look at it the right way, in my opinion. They don't look how it would solve a lot of society's problems in criminal justice, social service, academic problems. And they don't see the benefits from a fiscal standpoint, as well as the benefits to society in general for having a more robust mental health program in California. California is kind of behind the times compared to other states, you know? I mean, let's face it, there's a lot of countries, there's a lot of places that have better mental health programs or more support politically for mental health than the state of California. We're not that great, so don't, don't, you know, I'm telling you, I'm doing all these things, but we're not doing so hot here in California compared to other places.
We have a long way to go, but thank you so much for everything that you've done so far. The next question is, what is the status of California's application for IMD exclusion waiver? There's a comment that says we need more crisis beds.
Yeah, the IMD exclusion, I had a bill last year, or two years ago, that passed that required the federal, requested the federal government do an IMD exclusion waiver in California's medical and mental health system. What that means is that California was trying to get a waiver from the federal government for their drug medical organized delivery system. There's now a bill in Congress, by the way, to eliminate the IMD exclusion. IMD exclusion means that an organization that has more than, I think, 12 beds, somebody that has knowledge can maybe give the technical details, but 12 beds or more cannot be reimbursed for their services through the medical or drug medical system. So it really reduces our ability to create residential treatment facilities in California because we're not allowed to fund them through the medical system. So we're trying to get that changed. That's kind of a stupid law, isn't it? There's a lot of stupid laws. That's one of them. I'll act like Donald Trump on that stupid. But isn't it? I mean, you know, where else are these people going to go? Out in the streets? Well, exactly, they go out in the streets, and then they cost society more money. So why not have a residential treatment program that's funded adequately in our healthcare system for drug treatment and other serious mental health conditions? I mean, come on, you know? Put your Mickey Mouse hat on and figure that one out. I mean, that's, your mascoteer hat, that's what we used to say when I was a kid. That maybe dates me a little bit. So we're trying to get that right now.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for answering that question. The other question I have is, the counties throughout California define serious mental illness differently. There seems to be funding for programs for people with mild or moderate mental illness, but not for people with serious mental illness. When will the legislature address the fact that Latterman-Petrus Short Act lacks a definition of serious mental illness that can be consistently applied by all California counties?
Well, the Latterman-Petrus Short Act is the basic mental health act that establishes the services for seriously mentally ill programs. And those are funded through the counties, county government. State has realigned dollars to the county to fund those. The realignment dollars don't adequately cover the cost of those, quite frankly. The counties don't get adequate funds from the realignment dollars to fund the seriously mentally ill. The moderate, mild to moderate category are through the managed care medical system, where you're covered in that way through your medical managed care program or through your private insurance. So I think this bifurcated mental health system, where we have seriously mentally ill funded one way and the moderate, mild, mental health funded another way, it's not very logical. It's not unified. It's not integrated with the other healthcare systems. And it's not funded adequately. And California has tried to integrate the mental health system. But I think we took a big setback this year with the budget crisis that we had. We were getting to the point where we were going to have some serious change occur in the Latterman-Petrus Short Act funding. Why should mental health be separate from other healthcare? It should just be funded just like other healthcare, the same. And this segregation is really prejudice and discrimination, in my opinion. So we have to change that. It would save a lot of money if we did that, if we had an integrated, full-service mental health service in California, like other states do. But we don't. And it, there's a lot of people that don't want to change that, quite frankly, a lot of pressure. Insurance companies don't want to deal with it. They don't, they talk the talk, but they don't walk the walk. So we got to, we got to get the governor's attention and find out if he likes spending money on 40% of the people in the California state prison system being seriously mentally ill people that were put in the prison mainly because of their behavioral problems, because they're not treated, they're not treated for their mental health problems, and they get put in the state prison. $91,000 per year per inmate is the average. Somebody with mental health problems is probably $125,000, $130,000 a year. Now, that's astounding. That's all state general fund. It's not medical. There's no federal funds. Can't get medical funds in the state prison. It's all 100% general fund. So your state budget gets thrown out of whack because we put people in prison rather than in IMD beds or residential treatment or supportive housing and an integrated mental health system. So we're wasting a lot of money on this. This is like a big travesty, in my opinion. And, okay.
How much does California invest in mental health research?
They don't invest very much. There is mental health research invested by the Mental Health Services Act Commission. We put money into research. And that has been given, and we have some results from that that show a lot of good things. California, in terms of their budget, does not put a lot of money into mental health research other than Prop 63 Commission programs.
So thank you so much. The next question is from our warm lines, one of our warm line staff members. As you know, we get a lot of calls on our warm lines. So the question goes as, we get callers whose loved ones have serious mental illness and have medical. Their loved ones cannot get medically necessary treatments. However, medical covers the same benefit if someone has substance use disease. This is because of California's 1115 waiver. The Center of Medicare and Medicaid Services has issued guidance that will allow California to amend their 1115 waiver to receive reimbursement for up to 30 days for medically necessary treatment for serious mental health illness in an institution of mental disease. Why isn't California amending their 1115 waiver to include treatment for serious mental illness?
Okay, there's a 1115 waiver working group that is started right now. Between now and the end of the year, they're going to be working on the 115 waivers. What that is, folks, is it's a contract, basically, a waiver. There's a contract between the federal and state government on Medicaid for the federal funds and the state funds are medical. Okay, and it's a contract where we both put up money. The state puts up money, and the federal government and the counties put up money. And they have to agree on a continuum of the services that are going to be allowed under that contract. And so the contract can be modified by a waiver. And the process is, the federal process is the 115, 1115, three wants five waiver process. And we have attempted in the past to get the IMD exclusion, which allows federal funds to be spent on residential treatment. And we hope to do that again this time. So the answer is, we're going to try. We're going to try to get the federal government to recognize that. One of the things they say when they do the waiver is, well, it has to be revenue neutral. That's one of their rules. And that one is kind of, you know, what does that mean, though? I mean, how do they interpret that? The way I interpret it is, if you want to save money, you don't let people out on the streets, and you don't let them gobble up all the government services because they're homeless and they're getting all the crisis services. The police, the fire department, the medical system, social services are responding to them. They're just using up services at emergency level, 5150s, other things. And we're not taking care of them. And we're not taking care of them adequately. So that's, you know, rather than put them in housing and provide housing or residential treatment facilities where they can be treated on a, just a normal basis, which would save a huge amount of money.
Absolutely.
So and then, and then, of course, when they're homeless and they're untreated mentally ill, then they'll have some kind of altercation with the police department and then they get arrested. And, you know, get, you know, after a couple arrests, they get bumped up to a felony and they violate parole and, and then they get bumped up and then they go to state prison. And then we spend a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year for five years, ten years, whatever, you know? I mean, we can end up spending one million dollars for somebody that's untreated that just happened to shove a police officer or something. You know, assault on a police officer. Okay, ten years in prison. You know, ten times a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, one point two million dollars, right there. You know, and then they're let out after that ten years. Do you know of any successful treatment program in a state prison? Can you treat a person in terms of mental health conditions in a state prison? Please find me somebody that will say that we can do it because I've never heard anywhere that we can successfully treat mental illness in a state prison. The only thing we can do is give them medications to control them, control medication. So I don't, I, I kind of, I think the billions of dollars are spent on mental health problems in the state prisons, literally. And sometimes I think that we spend more money on the state prison mental health programs than we do in the community from the state general fund. I believe that's true. I think I did a study about four years ago. I found out that was the case. And I believe that's still true.
Thank you. I completely agree. The next question is, when are we going to have more residential treatment centers and more therapy available?
Well, we try to have more residential treatment programs by getting what we call supportive housing. And the governor is talking a lot about housing and supportive housing. And supportive housing is sort of your mild to moderately mentally ill person that can be taken care of in a certain way. It's not, it's not for the seriously mentally ill, higher acuity mental health patients that need like a higher level of care, you know, I, you know, what we used to call a level fourteen high, high acuity mental health bed, which we need to get the I M D exclusion waiver removed to get those beds funded. So let's see if we can get the I M D exclusion taken care of and we could use our federal government funds on residential treatment beds as opposed to state prison cells. That's, that's essentially or county jail. Or county jail. And, and you know, when you go into county jail, you're, you're dealing with like sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, all the attorneys, all the judges, you know, all that kind of stuff for the mental health. And the, and the judges have created these mental health courts where, and they've told me the mental health courts and the drug courts, they don't want the people in the, in the county jail. They want to put them into residential treatment and keep them out of the county jail and not even book the people. This is pre-booking. And so we did a law, I did a law a couple of years ago that allows mental health court judges like Stephen Manley, Judge Stephen Manley, who everybody knows, to, before somebody's booked, to have a conference with the DA and public defender. And if they determine that the main cause or main issue of this person is their behavioral health problems that's untreated, they can just waive the, the, the charge and defer the charge and then say, we're gonna send you into a residential treatment. But they gotta have residential treatment beds. They have to have those facilities. They're staffed by trained professionals to do that. And that's the missing link right now. We have the law set up to do that, to keep people out of prison. We just don't have those beds. So those beds are, that's kind of a key thing we need to lobby for is the mental health exclusion, I M D exclusion waiver. People are right about that. I hear that from a lot of people.
Thank you, Senator Bell. We're gonna take a short break. I have a lot more questions for you, but I would like to invite Supervisor Cindy Chavez, who's the president of Board of Supervisors, to come and say a few words right now.
Thank you. I, I don't want to take any time. I, I'm so excited to be here with Senator Bell, who really has been the father and Pat Bell, the mother of the mental health movement in our county for a long time. Many of you may not know this, but when I talk to my colleagues in different parts of the country, they're stunned at our investment in mental health and behavioral health here. And they, they credit a lot of that to, historically, and I think to Senator Bell. So really, that's all I wanted to say. And then Ravina, just because I'm on and I talk about COVID nineteen wherever I go, I wanted to make sure that everybody on the line knows that you can receive a free test. If you text, I'm sorry, if you go online and you go to SCCFreeTest.org, scroll to the bottom of the page, you'll see all the places you can get a COVID nineteen test. And I want to encourage all of you to do that and be safe and be careful. Thank you for letting me pipe in.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that information. I think it's, it's, it's better to be safe than to be sorry.
Of course.
Thank you. Over to you, Senator Bell. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna ask you some more questions.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So do you, do you think Campbell Police Chief planned bear cap purchase is necessary for Campbell's community? Or do you think the purchase promotes more fear than cooperation within its community?
So the police, what, can you repeat the question? I, I was having a hard time hearing that.
Okay, let me repeat it. Do you think Campbell Police Chief planned bear cap purchase is necessary for Campbell's community? Or do you think the purchase promotes more fear than cooperation within its community?
No, they don't need to purchase that. They'll just take that off the books. It's a waste of money. You asked me. Waste of money. Yeah, they should buy that stuff. I mean, I mean, police departments are hopefully changing and transitioning. You know, like four years ago, I did two bills that I'll mention, SB ten and SB twenty-nine. And it took like three years to get these bills to finally approved. And this requires all police academies and in-service training to have a mental health component. And a mental health component that is culturally competent. You know, in terms of all the diversity in our community. It seems to me that when you say public safety and having a safe, happy, thriving community, the focus should be on avoiding crimes, preventing crimes, not waiting, doing nothing and then waiting for the crime to be committed and then arresting a lot of people, arresting the young people and, you know, we should, we should have, we should have we should have these violence prevention programs in the schools. We should have, that's why mental health programs in the schools are so important. I've been so pleased we got the six million dollars for Santa Clara County. Marianne DeWine's totally correct. She's the superintendent of our County Office of Education. And a superintendent that believes in mental health programs in schools will reduce crime in the future in our community and have those kids understand about, you know, violent crimes like rape, understanding those kinds of issues. I think, I think that's important for the young people to have education and mental health training. And then the law enforcement should have training on how to deal with somebody that has mental health problems and know what the difference of the different types of diagnoses are. And then maybe de-escalate the whole situation. And perhaps ultimately, hopefully, call, maybe they ought to invest in this, calling a mental health crisis intervention team that is the social workers and mental health staff to go out and respond to the person and find out how they can help the person that's having a mental health episode. We have, we have, we have a law called fifty-one-fifty. A lot of people want to change that. And I, I think, I think we have to change how we deal with mental health crises to avoid this confrontational kind of situation with the police. And have the police coordinate and work better with mental health professionals. So I would rather see them focus on that rather than buying that kind of equipment. I think it's kind of a waste of money. They can do other, you know? They, they would probably have plenty of volunteers in the community if they maybe worked with a mental health crisis intervention team. Suicide crisis programs as well with the kids, you know? The youth drop-in centers, working with the youth drop-in centers to help kids go to the youth drop-in centers. You know, the gang intervention programs, you know, to try to keep kids from joining gangs, drug, drug treatment and programs for drug treatment, drug, you know, intervention for drug treatment for young youth, you know, to keep them from using drugs, you know? That's the kind of thing we need to make our community safe. Should be about public safety, not, not not so much, you know, after the fact law enforcement.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Violence, violence prevention programs are the key here. So I completely agree with you.
There's a lot of good models that are out there that have been studied, you know? This is all, you know, I'll, I'll say this about mental health in general. There's a lot, there's a lot of research already done, all this stuff. This is not reinventing the wheel. There's been a lot of academic professional research on all these things that I'm talking about. I'm not talking, and, and they estimate how much money you would save the taxpayer and how much more healthy we'd have in our community, you know, reducing the mental health conditions. There, this is not brain science, you know? We have, we have, we have, we have plenty of evidence that these treatment and programs work. A lot of people have this stigma. They think, wow, there's nothing you can do for somebody that has drug abuse or there's nothing you can do about somebody that has mental health or we don't want to really talk about it. That's ridiculous. There's a lot, there's a lot of evidence that show that treatment and programs do work for people and they could have happy, successful lives working with the treatment programs. And NAMI has always been a strong advocate of that and I, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The next question I have is, the mental health service model also needs to provide education and support to families, not just the individual. As the parent of two young teens with mental health diagnosis, the effects on our family unit and each of us individually is significant. Treatment that focuses only on the patient leaves both patient and the family members without sufficient support and knowledge effectively manage the individual's illness, keep the family unit healthy, stay mentally healthy themselves. I was told that fifty percent of those who take care of someone with mental health disorder end up with anxiety or not depression within two years. This has happened to me and my husband and myself. So this was, this was a comment.
Yeah, well, I agree because I, you know, Pat and I, of course, we have a family member that has been diagnosed with schizophrenia and schizoid affective disorder and has developmental disabilities and is developing disabled. So in the regional center. So our, our, our our taking the peer-to, NAMI peer-to-peer family-to-family support program. You know, I'll give a shout out for that. That really opens your eyes about what you could do to help your family member and keep the family together and you know, this, you know, the studies show that before we start having these programs, divorce, when somebody has a special need or, you know, this kind of thing, it's like seventy-five percent. It's double the normal rate of divorce. So keeping the family together through this stressful time when you have a, a, a child or maybe another member of your family that's, maybe it's your spouse or your grandparents or some other member of your family. But it's, it's very stressful on the family and that's why we should have that family, family support. And they should have regular programs that you should be eligible for counseling and all the, all the treatment programs for the family members. So as part of your healthcare. Sometimes we forget about the family members, but it seems to me that that's discrimination, basically, you know? So I, I would, I'd give a shout out to the NAMI programs. They have some really good family-to-family programs, the training for the family. What is it? A six-week, is it a six-week program now?
It's the family-to-family is eleven-week-long program.
Eleven?
Yeah, and we're doing it on Zoom right now.
Yeah, let's do that. Everybody get, sign up. Come on, everybody get on that. Sign up. You haven't done it already. Let's sign everybody up on that one. Because I recommend it. It works. It helped, it opened my eyes. It helped our family. You know, it will help a lot of families if you go into that. And then, you know, we keep, we have, we were trained with other people and we've kept together. We have kind of a connection with other family members that, other families. And so we keep, we keep, we keep together. You know, the other families, we kind of give a, we create a permanent support network for ourselves and our families when you go to those family programs. You get to meet other people that have similar, you can talk about it with them, you know? So that's a, that's a really good thing. I think it really, you're not alone. You have people you can help, you can reach out.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm actually attending it right now and it provides so much support and information for the families that it just creates that bond and a bond that you would always carry, you would always have it together forever.
Right, yeah. You get a bond. You have Christmas parties, other kinds of, you know, go have dinner once in a while with the group, you know, that kind of thing.
Absolutely. The next question I have is, what will it take for M H S A N P L H funds to be allocated to the, to board and care residential assisted living?
Well, we have the No Place Like Home Bond Fund that has funds for housing for mentally ill and the bond funds have been, they, they've, they've started the the allocation for those bond funds and they are inviting organizations to apply for that funds to create those kinds of facilities with the, with the No Place Like Home program in the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And I think, I think the the money is being released right now. If you check with my office, we can give you the deadlines for applying for those. The board and care home reimbursement rate is a problem. And we always have to fight for having an increase in the cost of living for the reimbursement for the residential treatment facilities because you know, the cost of the staff and the people that run the place go up, you know? Then we had the, you know, we had the minimum wage increase from fifteen dollars to fifteen dollars and then some, you know, the city of San Jose, I think, raised the minimum wage and so forth at other places. Well, when that happens, the cost goes up for some of the staff. And we have to, we have to continue to increase their cost of living to, otherwise, what are they gonna do? They're gonna cut back programs, cut back dinners, but what are they gonna do? Close down? We had no increase for a long time. Um, we had no increase for a long time until, like, I think it was two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, we finally convinced Governor Brown to grant an increase for programs. And, um, there were hundreds of residential care facilities that were being closed throughout the state of California. So our capacity to provide housing and programs for people was diminished because all those places were closed because they didn't have a cost of living increase. So when, when you look at the budget, make sure that they have a COLA in, uh, in the budget for all those programs. You know, the money, money's gotta come from somewhere, right, to run them, you know, to turn the lights on, to feed the people in the residential treatment, so forth.
Absolutely. Um, the next question I have is, uh, do people looking to fill your seat understand with the same passion of mental health needs? I worry the next person won't get it the way you do.
Do the people that are, what, no?
Do the people looking to fill your seat understand it with the same passion?
There's two people, there, there's two candidates. Um, I'll say this, I'll say both the two candidates, uh, worked in county government, you know, David Cortezzi and Ravel, both of them worked in county government, uh, uh, you know, Dave is the county supervisor and is the county lawyer. So, so, yeah, they both understand this, I would say. Do they have, do they want to put this as a priority? Are they gonna pick something else to be their priority, or are they gonna focus on mental health? I, ask them, I don't know. I haven't, I, I like to see what their priorities are. I get confused sometimes with politicians, like, um, give you an example, uh, we had a, uh, NAMI, uh, summit with Gov- with, uh, the candidate Gavin Newsom. And he, he was up in San Francisco on the, all the, the people that were, um, interested in mental health programs came to the meeting, we had a, we had a, um, a big forum, uh, like a candidate forum. And he said he was for peer support programs. Then we did the bill, and, you know, I said, oh, boy, he's got, he's supporting this, uh, peer support program. I'll introduce the bill, and then we introduced the bill, and then it came, it came, you know, when the, the Senate approved it forty-nothing, the, the Assembly approved it four, eighty to nothing, then it went to the governor and he vetoed it. So it was like, okay. So we're giving him one more chance this year. If he vetoes again, that kind of tells you something, right? So I think, I think when people run for office, uh, and they, they can't, you have to kind of, you have to really question them, and I think having these forums is very important. So NAMI might host a, a candidate tonight or something to see where they're coming from, ask them some specific questions.
And Supervisor Dave Cortezzi might be joining us at four P M. today, so he can answer those questions as well.
Yeah, he will be able to tell you, I, I, you know, honestly, I think David, David has already said he's supporting all these things, so. Um, and Ravel, I haven't heard, heard, um, as much, but, but both of them know this stuff pretty well, I mean, they're, you know, they were at the county, both of them had careers there, so, um, they're familiar.
Um, the next question is, what do we need to do in order to include expansion of Section Eight housing in the Biden platform?
Well, what we have to do in California is eliminate the requirement that there has to be a vote for public housing. There's a constitution part of California, it's called Article thirty-four. It requires that in California to have public housing, they have to put it on the ballot in the communities, uh, to vote on it. There's also a requirement that we build affordable housing in California, so they're kind of go, these kind of conflict with one another. And we have to repeal this Article thirty-four. It was, it was, uh, it was an article that it was approved, um, about nineteen fifty, after, in nineteen forty-eight, the federal government passed a, um, anti-discrimination in housing law in nineteen forty-eight. Well, nineteen fifty, California had the Article thir- thirty-four that was put on the, uh, ballot through an initiative in, in terms of real estate, uh, organizations. And, and it prohibited the building of public housing in California, uh, if the vote of the people in that city or that community wasn't approved. So that pretty much put a, a stop to a lot of the programs. The governor, the governor and the President Biden, or hopefully Biden, I'll just, I don't know, we'll see. Uh, but they should have a housing platform that includes, uh, Section Eight housing, there's a long waiting list, uh, people are waiting to get into Section Eight housing. And we should have Section Eight housing, um, uh, increased, uh, have a more robust program, it hasn't been increased in decades, to be honest about it. Uh, how can we have a community if we don't have housing for all the income levels? Think about it. What are we, some kind of bunch of bigots or something? Are we, we have to look inside ourselves and decide whether or not we want to have an inclusive community. We a bunch of bigots? I don't think so, let's get going, let's take care of this. So, you know, I mean, that's my opinion, I mean, don't, don't be a bigot, you know, support, support housing needs for all the people. I thought that, I thought we said liberty and justice for all. That's what, my dad always taught me that, my dad, you know, I have nine brothers and sisters, my parents were, um, San Jose State alumni. And they met, my dad met my mom after World War Two on the campus, he was a, he was a paratrooper in World War Two, very patriotic guy, hated the Nazis and hated the, you know, the bigots. And, uh, supported, uh, the civil rights, my father did, set a good example for me for social justice. And my mom also, my mom, my mom, um, delivered groceries, uh, in our nine-passenger station wagon in East San Jose, she delivered groceries in the early sixties. And, um, just a few years ago, uh, I, I reminded her about how she used to have me help her, when I was a little boy, loading the car up and riding around and finding the people's homes and delivering the groceries. And, uh, I said, well, what group did, she says, you know, the group, uh, she says, you know, the guy that loaded the groceries, some of the groceries in our car, that was Cesar Chavez loading the groceries in our car. I go, okay, I didn't know that. She goes, yeah, yeah, he was one of the guys that loaded groceries in the, in the, in the car to help people. So aren't, aren't we, aren't we for liberty and justice for all? Aren't we, uh, isn't that United States, the, my dad said that's what he fought for in World War Two, I mean, you know, risk, you know, these guys that risk, you know, patriotism means that you're for these kinds of things, you know? In my opinion, I would, you know, maybe some other people have a different opinion, but that's my opinion, I mean, you know, it's part of our housing, is a basic need of people, and we should take care of them regardless of what kind of disability they have, if they have a mental health problem, we should provide the treatment for them in the housing, and, you know, this is, if they have developmental problems, the same thing, and we should take care of them, take care of those that can't take care of themselves or need a little extra help, you know? The seniors, we're treating them horribly right now, too, in the housing area, there's many of them that, you know, there's senior homeless people, it's disgusting.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's like moral, the moral, this is a moral issue for us. You know, uh, it's like to find out if we're gonna be selfish or we're gonna actually believe in these things, you know, so.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you so much, Senator Bell. Um, I do see Supervisor Dave Cortezzi here, and I would like to invite him to speak for a few minutes.
Good, great.
Dave, over to you.
Hi, Senator Bell, thank you so much, as I've enjoyed, uh, listening for a few minutes, we just came off of a town hall meeting dealing with the medical, um, contact tracing side of COVID.
Oh, that's great.
Very interesting topic, we had Dr. Sarah Rudman, um, who is, uh, the Chief Assistant Public Health, uh, Officer here, uh, explaining there are nine hundred contact tracers now in Santa Clara County, that's, they, they've just done a tremendous job over the last couple weeks. No, no other county, you'll be happy to hear this, Senator Bell, no other county in California is, is close to that, although I suppose you'd be unhappy as a state senator that no other county is close to that because you want everyone doing it. Um, but I'm happy to be on here today because the mental health side of everything we're dealing with right now is, um, is such an issue, and we can't forget that we entered, we entered this COVID nineteen period, um, this shelter-in-place period on March sixteenth with several other crises already underway. Um, one of them, uh, being the housing crisis, which Senator Bell has worked so diligently on and so effectively on, um, the climate crisis, which we can't forget is, um, it's an extraordinary threat, much like a pandemic to the entire world, and, um, and, you know, something that, uh, people like, like myself and Supervisor Cindy Chavez have been talking about prior to COVID nineteen is that we have a mental health crisis upon us. Senator Bell, of course, has been preaching that, uh, for years and trying to get legislation passed, uh, you know, in the, in the state of California, uh, to, to deal with moving mental health, um, in, off, o- off of what I would call a criminal platform and onto a, a true health platform. Um, we shouldn't be responding to people, especially right now, we see it happening every day in the news, uh, who, who are experiencing some kind of an episode or mental health issue, um, with badges and guns. Um, it, it's, it, people with badges and guns, even if they've been trained by the county in crisis intervention, are not clinical professionals. Um, and I'm not gonna get in, today into a whole, you know, discussion about, um, uh, anything involving excessive force, what I'm trying to say is, on a deeper level, why does our system sense an EMT out if you have a broken leg, but somebody with a badge and a gun out if you're experiencing, you know, a mental health issue? Um, this is not right, and it's not just something that developed recently, I, I would actually say there's been centuries of, centuries of, of Western civilization that didn't know what to do about mental health, so put it over on the criminal side and, and dealt with it by incarcerating people, by treating people like criminals, by, uh, really approaching people in the wrong manner, and, uh, we have a long way to go, um, and we're still working, um, even during this pandemic and converting our own jail system, uh, to get people out of there and into step-down facilities that really don't belong there. Uh, most people who are in jail really don't belong there, but we know that forty-nine percent of our jail census in Santa Clara County, uh, are folks who have a clinical diagnosis, a clinical diagnosis. Um, what does that tell you? And, and since when, you know, should we be taking somebody with a clinical diagnosis and, and locking them in a facility that was, that was meant for, um, you know, a, a violent criminal or a hardened criminal? Uh, folks would argue whether or not it's even appropriate for those folks to be in some of the facilities that we have. So I want you to know that the mentality of the Board of Supervisors is continuing, um, you know, really the legacy of Senator Bell when he was there on the Board of Supervisors to, to focus on this issue of mental health, but hopefully with, with so much help from NAMI and with so many of you and, and Vic and others who have come to the board and said, look, y- you need to step up your game, people like David Manetta who have said, come out and come to our facility, um, see what's going on, um, reach out to people's extended families and see who it is that is the people who are in our community who need, who need the, the help. Um, and, and you'll have, um, you'll have a different list of priorities, and that certainly happened to me on the Board of Supervisors, uh, mental health crisis went from being something I was concerned about, uh, in my top ten, to something that if it wasn't for COVID nineteen right now, uh, would be in my top two, um, and it would be homelessness, housing, um, and, and the relationship between those two issues and mental health alone, uh, would satisfy, uh, my priorities right there. So thank you for having me, and, um, I didn't know if anybody wanted me to answer any questions or anything like that, but I'm so grateful to just be on for a few minutes, and thank you for everything that you're doing, thank you, Senator, for what you've done, and, um, I'll conclude there.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Dave Cortezzi, uh, thank you for your time. Um, I would now like to invite, uh, Vivek Ojaki, who is the co-president, NAMI Santa Clara County.
He's doing great work. The first thing I'll start with, I'll try and go through some things quickly, because a few things came up during this meeting that I think are worth, um, making some comments on, so I'll go off-script from what I was gonna say, though I will say this to Senator Bell, I think my beard is growing longer than yours, so I'm, I'm a little ahead of you on that. And I've told my grandchildren that if I, if we get to the holiday season with the barber shops still closed, I might be playing Santa Claus this year. Um, just a few things real quick, um, I know Supervisor Chavez probably had to get off, but her, uh, her budget lead, which some people will probably be interested in talking to, Paul Murphy is on, uh, because the Warm Line was brought up and the service that we give off of it, I just wanted to recognize the fact that, um, we were able to double the hours on our Warm Line of the last, let's say, little over a year, uh, because Supervisor Chavez personally, um, spent time to see that we got additional funding to provide, uh, you know, more service than we were before that. Um, quickly on S B eight oh three, um, which I know Senator Bell is extremely passionate about, if some of you on the, uh, the Zoom meeting don't understand or didn't follow, he's tried to get this bill passed three years in a row. There's something to be said about persistence and the fact that you care about something so much that you don't let it drop. Um, our board, the NAMI Santa Clara County Board unanimously voted to support S B eight oh three, and we've sent a letter to that effect, um, to, to back up what Senator Bell's doing, and, and we'd like to see that bill passed, I mean, there's a lot of you on the Zoom meeting probably know, one of the main services we provide is peer support service. It's been one of the services that's grown exponentially, um, since we started doing that a few years ago. So we're, we're grateful, Senator Bell, I make this comment to you, Jim, hearing you say that when you're out of office, you'll probably become doing advocacy work, I wish you remember what a retiring Palo Alto City Council member said on his last night in office, he said, "Today, I'm a Palo Alto City Council member, tomorrow, I'll just be another irate resident." So I'm sure you'll, your passion will still come out and show. Um, I know that, by the way, for S B eight oh three, two of your staff members are on this Zoom meeting, Carly Hasbrook and Tom Steele, and I think Mr. Steele's contact information's been provided, so if any individuals want to send something in on S B eight oh three, given the fact that the two hearings on it are coming up here and before mid-August.
August fourth, the Assembly Health, the Assembly Health Committee, August fourth, two o'clock.
If you clear that, you've got, is it August eleventh? I forget this, or fourteenth, the second date, where it'll be in front of, yeah, and that's a committee you have to get through, that's, that's, that's always one of the toughest committees. Um, so anything we can do to support Senator Bell, I think we should do that. Um, let me thank Uday and Kathy, um, who, early on, this, this meeting didn't just sort of happen, it got brought up at a board meeting that we really wanted to have Senator Bell, um, come and speak because we know that, we, we understand this long stint of service and the fact that we're getting towards the, you know, the end of that, and everybody felt like we needed to do something that, um, recognized, recognized Jim for all the great work that he's done, so we're grateful to Uday and Kathy. Um, we have other board members on this meeting, Nava and Bev- Um, we have other board members on this meeting, Nava and Beth, and Harold Brown, um, a former board member, Verna is on.
For years.
Yeah, and I think, I think I saw, um, Sharon Roth send something, who's, you know, one of our, one of our founders, so to speak. So I think people should understand this about Senator Bell, if you don't. Um, he walks the talk. He mentioned earlier the family-to-family class. The reason why he did that is, he and his wife, Pat, um, attended family-to-family class, same family-to-family class that my wife, Mary, and I attended. And our group stuck together afterwards, um, when he said something about having Christmas parties and whatever. Most of the time, those were at his house. He invited us all over. So he's not a guy who's just pushing legislation. He's a guy with a big heart, who cares about what he's doing. And frankly, he cares about us. So it isn't another, you know, he isn't a soundbite guy. He's a guy that's tried to, um, and he's explained why, because he has his own, uh, family member. And he's a guy who's tried to, to make sure that mental health was more than just a buzzword. And so, um, on behalf of all of us, um, we're, we're grateful, both to you, Jim, and also to your wife, Pat. You know, it's been an integral part of our chapter. We're, we're honored to, um, associate with you, know you, and we're grateful for all the work that you've done. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we could still do a NAMI walk this year, right? We, we're not slowing down on that, are we?
No, we got our, we got our picnic coming. We're, we're gonna have a virtual picnic, I guess.
Virtual picnic.
We were about to, coming up, we're celebrating our 45th anniversary, as well as our NAMI Walk's kickoff. And the NAMI Walk this year is going to be a virtual walk. It's gonna be NAMI Walk Your Own Way, and it's gonna be on October 10th.
Okay, uh, I think my wife, Pat, has done a, a big job on that every year, so, so I, I expect to be called upon to.
Absolutely. To take you on that.
Do the fundraising, annual fundraising for Santa Clara County, Silicon Valley, NAMI, and, um, uh, we'll participate as usual, of course.
Absolutely, absolutely. But thank you so much, Senator Jim Bell, for coming tonight and, uh, and so doing for what you do and what you've done so far. I'm really, really happy that you were able to answer all the questions and be with us this afternoon. Um, I would like to, that, thank you on behalf of everyone who's here and the NAMI family.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, you're welcome, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Take care.